Good afternoon. Thank you, everybody, for coming. It's nice to see familiar faces. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, the Cascade Township Supervisor. This is technically a public meeting with the Board of Trustees, but it's combined with our Downtown Development Authority, which is today we have two of those members, Steve Stephan, who owns Culvers, and then also Michelle Kalela, who is a resident member. So thanks for coming. This will be the initial concept. Just the initial concept, nothing's final today, but to get moving on the village redevelopment. Quick background, 2020, 21, and we finished it in '22, we did the strategic plan, which is where you seek out community input for high priorities, not just land use, but where you want to see the community go. The 2019 strategic plan was done before some of us were on the board, but it prioritized industrial development around the airport, public transportation. The results that we got from the feedback we received during our process weren't at all, those weren't even in the top 10. I don't even think they made, they just weren't a priority. But the number one priority at the very top was a more walkable community center. So part of that was getting the bridge over the Thornapple River on Cascade Road, that pedestrian bridge. Some other things were done, but this was really, this is the start of actually seeing things happen. We got our new manager, we got staff, and we then hired OHM using DDA funding. OHM is a design firm out of Ohio. They've done some really cool projects. And today we have Tony Slannick, Josh Helms, and Andre, sorry, I don't know your last name. Okay, so they drove up from Ohio. They're going to kind of walk us through this, and this will be an input session, just brainstorming. There's no motion, you know, this isn't set, but this is kind of to get it moving and actually give us something to work with.
Okay, go.
Oh, sorry, Tony.
Okay, great. So before we get booed out of here, I want to make it clear that OHM is a Michigan firm. We're based out of Michigan. We're actually based out of Livonia is our biggest office. But I actually and Josh and Andre, we work in our Columbus office, which is our second biggest office in the company. So we're about 800 people. We have offices all across Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, just opened an office in Florida, got some other offices brewing. We do a lot of planning, a lot of planning, then a lot of planning outside of the Detroit area, outside the Columbus area, outside of the Cleveland area, outside of Nashville. And we concentrate on communities a lot like yours in terms of kind of envisioning the future and what's going to happen tomorrow, and helping the community make big decisions about what they want to look like, what they want to feel like, how they want to function, where the opportunity for investment is, and those sorts of things. So we're excited about this particular project. You know, your context is incredible, right? You're outside of Grand Rapids, you got the Thornapple River, which is an amazing amenity. I think that part of today is to really speak to the opportunity that the riverfront provides us and see what we can do to really celebrate that and make it more of a meaningful amenity to the residents of Cascade. Quickly today, how did we get here? We're going to be talking about the stakeholder engagement and establishing the framework. And then in terms of what's next is the village concepts, which I'm sure you guys are all very interested to see. And then the Tuffy Site and Tassel Park and sort of what's been happening in terms of just the thoughts around how we would develop or how we would enhance those particular places. So what can the plan do? I think the most important thing today is to start to speak to how we set priorities related to the public investment, and then how do we set the stage for private sector investment, reinvestment? You could say redevelopment, or you could say development. But really, it's important to understand today here with obviously the public, as well as the, as the different leadership boards and decision-making boards, is what does the community want to do? And so our job is to take a stab at what we think are viable options that make economic sense, make funding sense when you think of it in terms of the state, and certainly in terms of the local government and even the federal government. And then what we know needs to happen next is the policy decisions to create and set the stage for where we're going to go next, right? And so a lot of times that's in code development, and whether it's design standards or different types of initiatives related to policy. So there could be like a safety policy where we're now, we're really looking at enhancing the crosswalks and creating more of the connectivity thing. We're looking at code development, design standards. Design standards would be, hey, you need to do brick, you need to have X amount of windows on your property. We need to have the buildings loaded up against the street. We need to be able to have parking that's side-loaded or rear-loaded, things of that nature. So we're kind of setting the template for how you develop and redevelop within Cascade and certainly along Cascade Road. Another one important thing that plans do is it sets the expectation, right? So I think from an investment standpoint, if I'm an investor and I see the township investing in streetscape, right, and they're putting in trees, and we're putting in signage, you know, maybe we're closing some curb cuts to create more functional access, access management, safety related to moving vehicles, all those things that we look at in terms of improvements. I want to be able to react to that from the private sector standpoint. So well, how is that going to affect my business? How is that going to affect my property? How is that going to affect my potential tenant? Then we're also going to look at in terms of guiding future public sector investment. So again, back to like what's first, what's last, what's the most important, what's the least important? And what I want to just frame that up to say that, you know, is it the most important thing to create economic development in Cascade? I don't know if it is. Is it the most important thing to create a very safe, walkable environment? I think that might be one of the things that came out of a lot of the stakeholder work that we did. And so, you know, is there an opportunity to create more meaningful public space and create connectivity and walkability across the village? I think that, yeah, that was something that really we talked about. And then, yeah, and then informing the future private sector investment. So back to sort of what we predict or what we want to do in terms of like most important versus least important. As an investor, I want to understand kind of where the, you know, where are we focusing our energy? Where are we focusing our resources so that I can react from a business standpoint or from a resident, being a resident standpoint? So how did we get here? So we passed phase one, and that's when we sat with the stakeholder group and we sort of did an exploration. This is my fourth time in Cascade and walking around the community, understanding what's important. We visited some adjacent communities to kind of see what they thought or what, you know, what development looked like in terms of how they promoted it in terms of incentives, how they've created value out of walkability and the elevation of streetscapes, looking at, you know, public sector and public realm investment related to parks and amenities and stuff like that. And so we sort of understood the demographic, you guys, all as communities, and you know, how your families are shaped. And then where the trends that are, that are in the demographic that we're sort of reacting to. So we look ahead as we plan, what are we planning for, right? Now we're sort of in the midst of this phase two, which is the plan, which is really setting the vision and really articulating back to you guys through some of these concepts. And then certainly through some of the 3D visualizations that you guys will see, sort of what to expect in terms of what we could potentially expect if we all make the same decision and we're all in concert moving forward. Today's important because as we move to finalize the plan, words matter, your opinion matters, your questions matter, your concerns matter. My clarification matters related to what your concerns and issues might be. And we want to hear from everybody in the room if possible, right? Because we want to make sure that everyone's heard and that the decision-makers can go back and really weigh the pros and cons of each one of the concerns and issues and questions that the community comes forth with. Later in the presentation, there's sort of two options here. One is to use these cards to basically write down your questions, concerns, what you like and what you dislike, and then we'll put them in the ballot box in the back if you don't want to speak up. And if you do want to speak up, we'll give you that opportunity as well, okay? So this was us a little while ago, hearing from stakeholders, from part of the community, from the leadership about what they thought were important things as we moved into looking at the vision and conceptualizing how this thing can change. Again, we reviewed the demographics, the population, the market conditions, affordability, workforce economy. We understand sort of what's happening here in terms of investment and the value of that investment. We've looked at the existing conditions related to land use and roadway networks and connectivity, understanding not just, you know, the local connectivity, but more of the regional connectivity in terms of where the village lies within the context of the area and how you would potentially get there. Sorry, every time I touch this thing, it's going to go. So one of the exercises that we did was we take, you know, obviously our offices are in many places, but then even beyond that, there's just an incredible amount of pictures and concepts that we've seen implemented across the world. And it's important that we sort of say, here's all these options. And we do this photograph exercise where we lay out all these pictures of all these different places, places that look like Cascade, places that don't look like Cascade. And we basically challenged the group to really look through the pictures and just identify pictures that really resonate to you in terms of what you want to see Cascade become, what potentially Cascade is today, or maybe what Cascade was in the past. And so it doesn't have to be the entire picture, but it's an element of that picture that we want you to sort of look at and focus on and tell us why you think that's important and how does that ultimately become part of the context here in Cascade? So that's sort of the picture in the middle there of sort of what we were doing. And again, it's streetscapes, it's public space, it's different types of retail, it's different types of living arrangements and residential, high density, low density, middle density apartments, single homes, you know, every, which way you could possibly conceive the world is sort of in these pictures. And so what you gravitate to sort of helps us define sort of where the potential vision is. And so at that point, we start saying, okay, tie these pictures to the place. What part of, like, this is this picture, do you have, this is really interesting that you, you know, what are you focused here? Well, I think this could be really applicable to Cascade Road or Orange Avenue, you know, or boy, this would be really neat if we did a park that looked like this. Well, I really like how they addressed the crosswalk, you know, in this particular picture. You know, this seems like it's a very pedestrian friendly. I like the way the trees look in this particular picture. And so we looked at sort of like where these things could potentially be within the district and then why? And so again, there's iterations after iteration of sort of, of what we did there in terms of an exercise to get to the point where we're starting to establish the framework, right? And so, you know, obviously we had our technical analysis and certainly, you know, the stakeholder engagement related to that first round, obviously this is the second round. And then what we understand as professional planners and landscape architects, architects and engineers is best practices. What have we done that makes a lot of sense, has created value, that is, that is, you know, environmental sustainability, that creates value for the, for the community and things of that. And then obviously embedded in culture, embedded in sort of, you know, what we value and all those types of things. And so again, every place is different. And so there's no magic wand, there's no magic bullet, you know, we don't, this is never the same presentation. So you'll see me stumble a bunch of different times because Cascade's unique to Cascade. It's unique to the rest of the world. And so we're trying to extract what makes it unique so that we can understand how we can tie that to a plan that's implementable, achievable, and fundable, okay? So the project goals that came out of the engagement was to really look at this iconic riverfront. You know, is there, you know, we have what we have, and is there an ability to enhance it and improve it, modify it, and change it a little bit so it'd be more in keeping with sort of how we want to celebrate the village and how we want to sort of marry the village to the waterfront? Connected, you know, and safe streetscapes. You know, I can see there's a few different areas along Cascade, an Old 28th, and 28th, and Orange, and Thornapple that are maybe not as safe as they could be. And so what's the opportunity to make better crosswalks? What's the opportunity to make better mid-block connections? How can we address, you know, traffic lights? How can we address curb cuts related to access management? What are the things that we need to do in a case-by-case basis, not a broad brush, right? I mean, we're going to, you know, right now we're talking in terms of broad brush, big sweeping ideas. And then every one of these ideas can get drilled down to specifically where are we talking about making this improvement and how do we fund it? But, you know, in a broad sweeping way, what are the project goals? Same thing with the vibrant mixed-use village center. You know, we kept talking about walkable. We kept talking about green. We kept talking about being connected and feeling safe. So they all start to kind of mix together. The one thing specific to Cascade that I can say is that there was this real concern about the brand identity and the culture here that's held sacred and, you know, just continuing to be authentically Cascade. And I can tell you often, especially working in many communities across the Midwest, that they always sort of aspire to be this and aspire to be that, right? We want to look like that, and we want to look like this, and we've seen this, and we want that. With Cascade and leadership and the stakeholders that we had, you know, for our first round, it was very much like, we want to be us. We don't want to steal from this community and rob from that community and put all this stuff together, and all of a sudden we're Disney World. We don't want that. We want to be us. And so I thought that was pretty cool. So hopefully you agree with us as we look through these concepts of how we could potentially do that. So this is just more sort of like a little bit drilling down in terms of the goals. You know, destination green space along that, along the river that offers a variety of programming. We know what we can do today at Tassel Park. Everyone can raise their hand and say, you can do this, 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 and this. So the question becomes, is there more things that we could potentially do at Tassel Park to make it more of a community destination and offer more amenities and more interest? And so that's a question up for grabs today, especially as it relates to the concept that we did with the park that you'll actually be able to walk through on your phones when we give you the QR code to tab up. You can literally walk through the model, but we think is a first stab at a concept of what this could potentially look like. At the end of the day, it goes back to if we decide that Tassel Park is not a priority, then it's not. If we decide it is a priority, then we need to focus on that to come up with a plan that's specific to that with more rounds of stakeholder engagement, with more rounds of people that use the park, people that have been named after the, or the surname of the park and things of that nature. So important. Again, safe, connected vehicular and pedestrian environments and improved streetscapes and optimized connections. You know, if I could say OHM does one thing, that's what we do pretty good, right? So we do a lot of different types of transportation planning. We do a lot of different types of land use planning, vision planning, and a lot of it hinges around safety and connectivity. It hinges around transit. It hinges around bicycle facilities. It hinges around trail connections and certainly streetscapes and just walkable communities in general. And so I could go on and on about that space. And there's a lot of opportunities here in Cascade that we can implement a lot of the strategies that we've used across the Midwest to make a safer environment and more connected. A vibrant and authentic, another goal, a vibrant and authentic village center that supports a variety of commercial and residential uses. So kind of taking a step back, you know, we have what we have on Cascade, we have what we have on Old 28th, we have what we have on 28th, and then Thornapple and Orange and, you know, the rest. In terms of retail, in terms of commercial, office, you know, we have our restaurants, we have the things that we have. So the question became, they're sort of like, do we want more? Can we get more? What does it look like? Where does it go? Right? And, and so that sort of like, it sort of begs the question of where's the opportunity for investment within the village to, to create those types of businesses, those types of applications? One of the things that we talked about within the stakeholder group was a diversity of housing. Is there, is it necessary and does it make sense, both from an investment standpoint and a market standpoint, to create more options for residents to either move from where they're at today or to bring, attract people to live within the downtown or within the village? And then when you have more housing, whether, whatever type it is, if you have more housing within an area of this nature, you're going to get more people walking around. It becomes more of a neighborhood and then you start to build those connections. Then it starts to offer itself to the, for the coffee shop and for the, for the bar restaurant and for the retail and for the different things that we talked about being something that we were interested in looking at, right? And so, so that's sort of what we talked about. We talked about it on each of the streets and where it made sense and where it didn't, might not make sense. Sorry. Last but not least, and this is again, back to like what I said before, you know, authentically Cascade. That is absolutely the battle cry and the charge. And so what can we do to make the Tuffy Site authentically Cascade? What can we do to Tassel Park to make it authentically Cascade? What can we do to 28th Street, Old 28th Street and Cascade Road to make it more Cascade? That's the big question that we're sort of talking about today. There's Josh. So again, what we talked about, and this is something that's, you know, framework for all plans, is the placemaking elements related to your particular brand, culture, who you are, what you want to be, where are the opportunities for investment within the village, and then certainly all the connectivity components. So this is sort of how my industry speaks to one another, okay? We do plans. We do bubble diagrams and we do these different language maps to sort of show each other what we're thinking in terms of land use, connectivity, and the different components of urban design. And so these are all these different iterations of how Cascade could potentially change and where the opportunities were. And we sort of landed on this one. And then sort of now we colorized it and we gave it a key and a legend, and we spoke to the different land uses associated with the different areas. And so the stars are gateways and the exploding stars are important connections or important decision points. We have the different land use designations related to commercial and is it a community anchor? Is it a green space and things of that nature? Okay, here we go. And so we break it apart, you know, we kind of show each other, you know, this is what I'm thinking here, this is what I'm thinking there. And all these things translate to pictures, back to what we talked about before, of like what this thing could look like. And here's what I was thinking, and here's what they were thinking. And here's what the stakeholder group brought as a picture that they thought was cool and applicable to Cascade. And so, you know, when we're thinking about placemaking and where those particular areas are, they're going to, you know, create that sense of place and that identity. Those are the things that we sort of want to identify on the map and then tie it to an idea related to a picture that's either we've seen or, or a picture that we, a place that we've been or a picture that we've seen and how this could potentially be incorporated into a plan. And then it's not any of these ideas, it's all of these ideas. And then it's honed into what it's Cascade's idea of that concept, right? So again, different ways of moving traffic, different ways of moving people, different experiences that you can have and how that could potentially all fold into a village plan that over time can be built, can be funded, and be implemented, right? So this isn't tomorrow, this isn't next year, this is a 20-year plan and a guiding light of where we're going to go, right? As we all make the decisions related to where we want to be. So one of the cool things, when we first started this project, was the idea of the Tuffy Site. The village and its decision-makers identified that this is a huge opportunity for the village to really capture this important area and to look at it for an identifiable, important element to the community. It could really be destination-created, the gateway to Tassel Park, and really and truly the gateway to the village coming off the bridge. And so we looked at some ideas related to what that thing would look like. Again, this is stuff that we do, where we're just kind of goofing around designing things and what that could ultimately look like. But when we talked about that Tuffy Site and then we sort of talked about the Thornapple Plaza, and then we talked about Old 28th, and then we talked about the gateway on 28th coming down to the Walgreens, and certainly the Thornapple River, and certainly the dam. There's a lot of things there, right? And so how can we create this unified vision for how all these elements could potentially work together, right? So that when you're in each one of these places, you know you're in Cascade Village, right? And so again, we go back to the framework and back to those land use diagrams and back to those future place types. We talked about the different intensities of potential land use changes and what that might look like. So we talked about medium-density residential and what that might look like. We talked about mixed use and what those areas might look like. And then we talked about intensity level, not density, intensity. What does it look like? How does it, how does it contribute to the urban design and the culture and the context of Cascade Village? And in each one of these things, you'll see in the plan is sort of this minimal idea of change, this incremental change, and sort of this transformational change, right? And so it's like, where do we want to be on that scale? Let's touch it a little bit. Let's touch it a little bit more and let's sort of touch it a lot, right? Let's make some big changes. Let's make no changes. And so that was a lot of, there was some friction in that conversation, to be honest with you, right? And that friction's good, right? Because what that friction does is it says, this is what we want to keep about us, and this is what I'm willing to change about us, right? And so again, the plan is to knit those ideas together to come up with a compromise that we can get behind, that we can fund and we can move forward. And it gives the decision-makers a map and a guiding light to what decisions need to be made to keep the momentum of the plan going when the plan was born of the people. So this is more back to like the planning components and the different roadways, the different connectivities and the different ways of looking at the network. How do you beautify the network and how do you offer and engage more modes of transportation in the network? And is there things like art and landscape and beautiful signage and all the things that we've seen that can be incorporated into these connections? And so that's what you'll sort of see. Another one that you'll see too is back to like the stakeholders and the leadership of Cascade talked a lot about, you know, green, keeping it green. We want to maintain green. We don't want it to be over-urban. We don't want to be urbanized. And so is there opportunities to use stormwater management as a way to sort of keep it green and keep it looking wonderful? So there's lots of different ways to do this stuff. And again, these are all pictures. Many of these things were pictures that were brought forth out of that picture exercise I talked about before. Again, connectivity focusing on traffic calming, elevating the experience between the anchors, promoting sustainable solutions, and then placemaking at the heart of it all, right? So the key focus area, like I said before, was Tuffy Site and the Tassel Park. We have, you know, the 2D site plan, which is here. We have some character images that we talked about that really got the stakeholder group and the decision-makers excited. And then today, and to my knowledge, you haven't seen them yet, is some ideas of what these places would look like. And again, I hope everybody brought their phone. And if you didn't, we have a, we have an iPad. And then we also have, what was the other thing? Oh, yeah, the 3D goggles that you can literally walk around. The idea of what these concepts look like. And then in two, the overall village concepts, the building-type character images, the roadways and the public images and character images that sort of convey the idea and the options that we have related to the plan. that sort of convey the idea and the options that we have related to the plan. So again, you guys can read all the things I've said before. The one that stands out to me though is this high standard of design. And that really came back out of this being authentically us. And the buildings that were identified along Cascade, along Thorn Apple and along Old Twenty-Eighth that were like, this is us. This is who we are. Right? So we have more of that. Well, those two, those sort of had this higher end quality of design. They had the bricks and they had the stone. You know, they had a higher level of sophistication related to what it looks like. The aesthetics were were well done. The architecture was well done. The site design, the landscaping were well done. And we wanted to say, hey, let's take those types of ideas and implement them across the village. Right? We don't want to change too many things. We want to sort of identify what we love and keep incorporating that back into the plan. So this is the caveat, right? Again, I think I've said it a hundred times. I'll say it one more time. And then every time this comes up, again, it's going to blow right by it. These are concepts. These are just ideas. They're options to be pursued or to be struck down and say, we're not talking about that anymore, right? It's this is the first step of many steps to get to where we're trying to go. But you got to start somewhere. You typically start with the vision plan and then you move into more grounded, more thoughtful and more focused investigations on how to get the traffic calming exactly the way we want to be it. How to create public space so that it's wonderful amenity across the village? How do we keep things green? How do we promote investment opportunities, things of that nature? This is what you have today. And Josh can walk us through the design. Concept.
Sorry, let me get this little.
That's driving you crazy, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't know how to get it on. So it's kind of Tony teed up. My name's Josh Helms. I'm the design director at OHM. I uh, I'm in charge of really kind of setting the vision a lot of times to these projects. So I have a really fun job. I enjoy it. So I told people I color and draw all day and they paid for it. So so really what we tried to do is we know that Tassel Park is a beautiful place right now. So we analyze kind of the So what we tried to do is kind of analyze the program that's existing now. Kind of the pathways, some of the things that make it special and then improve on that. So we started from this like macro level and said, okay, well, you know, some things that we're seeing, you know, maybe we can unify a little bit more. You know, some of the pathways, some of the grading within the site can be unified. And then again, taking classic architecture, taking classic materials, then implementing it into the park. So I want to take you from kind of the left to the right. There in the corner, we really wanted to activate where the Tuffy is, Tuffy Site is now. We are, we're calling that kind of a four season shelter. We we'd like to refer to it as the jewel box. So this could be a gateway element. This could be a civic amenity that you can rent out for weddings. You know, I think it's it's very prominent and and really once you cross the bridge on Cascade Road, you know you're in Cascade. There's a formal lawn adjacent to that. There's a large grade change between the two, between the upper plaza and the lower formal lawn. And then what we wanted to do is kind of create a hybrid of the existing building that's down there. So we know that if you, if we demo it, we'll never get a building back down there. So we kind of almost did a split. We took the one overhang structure that's closest to the river and took that offline. And it could be kind of a trailhead. And then actually use the structure for maybe some of those maybe civic components like weddings and things like that. You can kind of see that there's a pathway that goes just to the left of that, maybe potential trailhead. And we're proposing that it gets, it connects underneath Cascade Road back up to the existing trail system. And really, I think what we wanted to do as well is is we wanted to activate the river. So you can see that there are stadium steps, which is kind of like large chunky blocks that are kind of go down to the water. We have some views that kind of showcase that and then break it up with plantings and things like that. People can sit down there at lunch. Uh, you can, you can create program around it. There's a lot of different ways to to activate that. There's fishing piers. We have kind of, I like to call them matchsticks that kind of come out that that go into the river that are more intimate. And then really you move on to the transitional space where it comes a little bit more active. So less civic at the jewel box and the formal lawn and more active at the slope lawn. And then we pulled a three season restroom building that that is more park like, park specific adjacent to Thorn Apple River Drive. So it activates the street. There's a plaza around that. And then there's some sort of a sculpture garden that incorporates water because that is an existing program that we'd like to put back or some form of that. And then we're calling it a slope lawn. So the grade is is actually sloping back towards the river there. So we're thinking some boulder kind of chunky walls that people can sit on. And then we'd have a pavilion at the at the terminus of that, which is, you know, it can be used for small audiences. If in comparison, if you looked at Friendship Park that was just built, it's about half the size of that. So so definitely you could program that very differently. But most of the time it'd be a seating plaza. You kind of wrap around that oval, that loop towards the river and then you come upon a cabinet, which is another space that's more intimate. You can sit, you can have a, you know, ten person gathering. It has a fireplace, so it's four season. It is open. But again, you can have a grill out there. You can program around that. The third oval to the right is more of a environmental component to the park. It's you know, I think we just play up the understory. We leave the existing trees, which we're trying to do throughout. And then we activate it with boardwalk systems. So it's more of a natural nature preserve type feel in that space. That's where you're going to get right in that little peninsula where the water's coming into the site. You know, we still have, we're proposing the fire pit, which is existing now. What, uh, as we as we move along, again, the dam was really important to us, the sound of the water connecting to the water. So you can see we have kind of a, a long boardwalk piece that sticks out. And and really what we wanted to do is you to be able to to view the dam almost face on without being in the boat. Back towards the street, we have a turnaround zone. We keep the maintenance building. It's the that's the square that you see the bottom right. And then we have parallel parking. So in terms of parking, we're hitting it's it's equal. So it's apples to apples of what's in there now. And then what's what's proposed on the street here? And then we activate that street by again, reinforcing you're in the park area, Tassel Park by by pavers of some sort.
One important note to this too is to say that while we can get a proposed thirty two spaces along Thorn Apple Drive, we can also Thorn Apple River Drive, we could also reorient the parking in a different way. So that's, you know, parallel parking. We could do forty five and get double the amount of spaces, right? We eat into the park a little bit, but we can double the amount of spaces, which I think has a lot of value to it. So again, these concepts are just concepts, but and they're ideas. But I think they're really important to understand like what can come, you know, out of this park related to the diverse amount of programming and and just, you know, the 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 sites in the in the in the context that can be enjoyed by all. So.
No, I think that's a great point. Uh, we know that there currently in Tassel Park, there's a lot of art. There's a lot of existing pieces that we wanted to reincorporate into this plan. So you can see there's a couple little nodes along Thorn Apple River Drive that that we want to showcase. So those, that would be kind of relocated art and or proposed art. And then at the corner of Cascade and Thorn Apple River Drive, you know, we're starting to introduce these walls and some of those walls would be incorporated with stone. I think we gravitated to towards stone from the stone building. And again, what is Cascade? So you can see that 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 starts to set up some of the streetscape elements as well that we're proposing with some sort of stone wall system. So the fun part, so I think now we'd like to, as we've kind of talked about what's in the park, please feel free to kind of use your phones. Uh, we have an iPad over here and we also have VR.
If you don't have a phone, you can use the iPad or you can use the goggles.
And then when you when it pops up on the screen, there will be an icon in the top right. It looks like a tiny little compass. And if you hit that and then hit allow, then you'll be able to move along with it.
So while everybody is doing that, I'm going to just flip through some stills and kind of discuss and talk to you about what we're looking at.
And and I want to say something, another little stoppage here is say that why do we do this? Right? We've had hardly any public input. And we're showing you a park jewel of 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 the village. This is to convey that we can make changes and we can create things, right? That are maybe a little bit different than what we have today. By no means is this what the park's going to be. There's an entire different design process to be able to get to that point, right? This is just an idea of what it could be. And it could, if you love it, it's a priority project. If you sort of say, we could do that, then it's just a potentially on the list. And if it's a leave it to hell alone, then it's that, that, then we do that. So again, when you look at this stuff, it's just ideas. But they're very contextual and they support what's happening around the design of it, meaning like when Josh said a lot of the trees are existing trees, it's because we already looked at how to grade this thing so that we know we can keep a lot of the trees. Right? So it's not clearing out the trees. All the tree stands that you'll see within your viewfinder are going to be, a lot of them are existing trees. Josh is not going to sort of walk through. If you're not looking at your phone and you're looking up at the board, freeze frames of the different park elements and the different park sites and components.
Yeah, you can jump, jump around pretty, pretty easily. Thank you, Tony. So this is, this is kind of superimposed our overall design on
Yeah, everybody look at this real quick because this is important. This is the whole thing bird's eye looking back from the dam. This is superimposed on the village as it stands today. So everything that's in your phone right now is all, it's super digital looking and like it looks really cool. It's all the pieces and parts. But this is sort of how it would look like from a bird's eye view of exactly what the concept is and how it sort of lays out from an aerial standpoint, very different than it is today.
Yeah, and you can see the the corner where the Tuffy site is now, it's super activated with that building, that architecture. You can see the grade changes, the the lawns and and how everything kind of really connects and and then I think really important is a kind of like a, a high level stadium step down to the water at the top side of the screen there and then more of a smaller version of that. So and you can see all the piers. So I think we're really trying to activate that water, get people out to it. Just some stills again that you can see in the QR code. Tassel Park would have some sort of signage component. We are envisioning like, you know, at nighttime, that thing is glowing, you know, and I think that is really impactful at at night. And then some plaza spaces around it, but
On the left side, you're coming down from the bridge and the right side's looking down Thorn Apple River Drive.
Yeah.
And this is this sort of iconic jewel boxes, Josh always says, with this sort of a plaza associated around it. This could be for wedding venues, rental areas, you know, just any, any sort of community activity we could, you know, host right there with spillout, meaning that, you know, we could potentially have the garage doors open up on the sides. And this is sort of a walk through breezeway sort of area that really expands the use of the facility. We've seen facilities somewhat like this. I'm going to tell you a hundred percent that this is not the architecture. It's whatever we decide it wants to be, right? From a different design process, this is just what it looks like so that we can put something there to convey the idea. This ain't the architecture.
This is on the top side. So this is looking from that three season shelter kind of in the middle of the park along Thorn Apple River Drive. And then looking down to the river and you can kind of see the the pavilion that we're proposing down there. It would maybe have some sort of a green roof structure similar to Friendship Park. No, I think, you know, we can definitely do that. We can incorporate those trees for sure.
Yep, when we get, yeah, you, this is good, but just understand we're we'll get there, right? This is just an idea of what that program could be because part of it's even saying, hey, we got an amphitheater. We were over at Friendship, Retrictions right there. We don't need that. That's fine. Then we'll just take this and now it's a fris, you know, you play frisbee. It's an open lawn area. It's whatever we decide it wants to be in the future. This is just what it could potentially be our heads not understanding and using it the way you've had over the last fifty years.
Yeah, think of yoga in the park, things like that. But yeah, but I think to your point, Grace, yeah, for sure. We can definitely add some trees in that zone. This is the um, the formal lawn that's just to the adjacent to the the large slope lawn that we just saw. These are the stadium steps. So you're going to see how we're incorporating green as you step up into the site from the river. A view of some of these matchstick pier type pieces that we're proposing. Again, that's more intimate. You can fish off of them. You can go and just have a conversation and feel a little bit like you're a little bit more intimate.
And we can get more sophisticated with these matchsticks where we have benches on them and little bump out areas. And so you can sit out there, read a book, listen to the water hit. You know, there's again, there's a lot, there's so much dynamic related to what we can do and how these different elements could potentially work together or be enhanced.
Yeah.
So don't get hung up too much on exactly what it is, but more conceptually of it coming down to the water, going out to like out to the dam and like literally looking at it head on. You know, being able to fish there easily without getting wet and mucky. There's a lot of things that we can do to really enhance the riverfront value that we have and 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 create interest and and an amenity.
Yeah, you can see beyond the 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 pier there, it's the the smaller version of those stadium steps that we've used in two other locations. This is what we're calling the cabinet. So we're proposing this. It's, it again, it's an open shelter, but it's something that you know, has a fireplace in it. It's still open views to the river. You can get a couple picnic tables in it. And what material that is, I think that's something that we can definitely look at later on. It's just, it's it's a placeholder to show you that there is a space. And that's really what we're trying to create, a number of spaces for a number of variety of people and and program types. This is along the river or I'm sorry Thorn Apple River Drive. So this is the, what we're calling the three season shelter. So it has restrooms in it. It's adjacent to some sort of water element. And it's, and it has a plaza, so and and lawn. So this is a lot for family reunions, you know, you can rent this out if you want to. But the restroom buildings would be available all the time.
One of the big friction points related to the stakeholders and certainly with the township leadership was the fountain. Right? So there's the, there's the extremes of like it's dump buckets and little twirly things and the kids go crazy. Then there's all the way to the other side where it's only viewed and not experienced, you know, where they're, and it's a, it's a almost like art. Right? And then there's somewhere in the middle where it's artsy and very cool. And then people can go and engage the water and kind of walk through it and do those things. So there's sort of the extremes of what a fountain is. Again, will be figured out if this becomes a priority thing for the township.
Again, you can kind of see with this one, this is kind of a, an idea of some of the grade change. So right now you almost have three planes that are going on, right? You know, the existing park. And what we're doing is we're almost pushing those planes out towards the river and then enabling some of those lawn areas. But then also we do have areas where you can see here where we're getting to that environmental zone that that we do have a lot of But then also we do have areas where you can see here, where we're getting to that environmental zone that, that we do have a lot of great change.
So it's about usable space, right? Within this concept, it's more usable space. When you're at Tassel now, there's not a ton of usable, usable space and when it is, it's small and sort of like unpredictable and sort of you're captured. And you're sort of like tucked in, and so we kind of want to open it up and create, you know, the larger volumes of space to sort of have. Um, you know, the different community events that we talk about. And then certainly have more intimate spaces like the cabinets and along the waterfront, the steps and stuff. So again, variety of spaces, a variety of feelings, a variety of, of, of interests. So that people, you know, again, are engaged with the, with the park and the community.
And really unifying this, the spaces with the pedestrian circulation. So again, here's some signage. This would be more the environmental zone, so with the boardwalk type element that's going across some of the, the naturalized understory that we're proposing. And then there's kind of the existing fire pit zone kind of reimagined, so within that, that small peninsula. But you can see the, the steps in the back and the grade change, it's definitely, there's a lot going on in that area. And then wrapping it up with just going back to that overall vision. You see how all those pieces and parts kind of form on the side now and. And really trying to uh, to unify the park as a whole.
All right, back to me. Right, we're attacking this, alright, okay. Park. Good. Maybe. Village concepts, so. Um. The caveat. Concepts, don't get too hung up on all the things. This is sort of what we looked at in terms of the village, this is the outline of the area of focus. Um, obviously there's influencing factors outside of the line. But this is sort of what we said is the village and how we're going to proceed. At some point you have to draw a line and say this is what we're looking at, this is what we're not looking at. In concept one, in all the concepts, we believe it's important to identify Tassel Park as. As improved. Okay, so in every concept, Tassel Park gets addressed. If it's the priority one, it could be, is it priority ten? It might be, but somewhere in there, it's a priority. Tu- yeah, toughy and taffle, tu- toughy and taffle are the same thing, Tony's slang, because Tony's slang is not that guy, not that bright. Um, so toughle, toughy, tassel. The thing, oh, do I have a little laser? Yes. Okay. Sorry. So coming down the bridge, tassel here, um. Is there opportunity to uh create? Higher intensity. Uh, commercial or residential that faces Thornapple River Drive and faces the park? Would that be a really nice place to live that looks out over the park? Because that's your green space and that's your backyard, maybe. Is there, um, as, as, as we look at, you know, this sort of downtown quarry type of area? Um, is there more opportunity for retail type of, of, uh, of, of, of land use? Yeah, especially when you have a park across the street, that just makes a heck of a lot of sense.
And to add, you know, the existing infrastructure, so the village uh shops that are there now, it kind of creates that corner.
The one thing that we talked about with the leadership and with the stakeholders was looking at Old Twenty-Eighth Street. And what can we do with Old Twenty-Eighth Street? To make it more walkable, um, more bikeable, um, you know, and, and feel less. Uh. Vehicular focused. And so if we do streetscapes, if we do a road diet, if we uh incorporate larger sidewalks and street trees and bombas and on-street parking. What could potentially happen with Old Twenty-Eighth Street? Old Twenty-Eighth Street, back to what we thought is a, is an important thing to be thinking about. In the future is, is there more residential to be incorporated into the village? That will create demand for commercial or retail restaurant type of uh, of, of amenities. And so if that's, if you're following that line of thought, this old Twenty-Eighth Street. Making it much more pedestrian focused becomes potentially a neat place to do a higher density residential. Um, you know, it could be a um, a multi-family attached town homey type of uh, of, of arrangement. And so if that's the case, then how would that lay out? And what parcels would that involve? And how would that happen over time in terms of a phased approach? Right? So if that's something that is, is of interest and there's property owners that want to redevelop. That could be a potentially great opportunity for the village to create the, the diversity of housing that I think we talked about. In order to uh get the things that we want along Cascade Road and down Twenty-Eighth. The other idea is to really sort of green up and address some of the buildings uh. Frontage along Cascade and then also looking at Thornapple Plaza. In terms of breaking up that giant sea of parking, incorporating more green elements. And then creating a functional type thing of like a farmer's market or an artisan type of. Uh, installment and arrangement within that parking lot to kind of break those things up. And really enhance that environment and kind of create a better connection and a more kind of a livable, walkable environment.
Just real quick, along Cascade there, I think really, we're trying to green it up, but also reduce the amount of curb cuts. That was really important to us too, as far as pedestrian safety and things like that.
Yeah, that's important. So again, you know, what these things could potentially look like. Are just the pictures that we're showing here in terms of intensity, density. The different types of single-family residential that could potentially be there. Um, the multifamily, the townhomes, like what they could potentially look like from an architectural standpoint. Um, what that updated streetscape might look like in terms of travel lanes, in terms of bike lanes, in terms of on-street parking. And and walking environments and how we would want to see those buildings sort of arrange themselves up against the street. Again, back to what, you know, the, the Thornapple Plaza and the Market Pavilion. And how these things have been incorporated, we've seen in the, in, in other applications of blown out, you know, parking spaces. Creating, you know, a, 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 a green uh connection and enhancing that with uh different types of programming. That could be on the weekends or, or in the evenings. So concept two, again, back to. Things that are constant. We still feel that Tassel Park needs, you know, some improvements. We still feel strongly that there's opportunity along the park to create value. We also looking at more of a denser type of format for housing and residential with, along Old Twenty-Eighth Street. The big move here. Is right here. What we want to do is we want to vacate that connection to Cascade Road. So essentially we build, do a cul-de-sac and we cap Old Twenty-Eighth. So essentially then it's just for the neighborhood. It's not to go in, in, and uh, as a, as a, as a workaround for Twenty-Eighth. And so what that would be is that would be another type, kind of park, urban plaza. And then we're also talking about even like a mid-block connection and the, over top, over Cascade, not over top. But like along Cascade, a mid-block uh, 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 crosswalk.
And.
Really crossover to the other side.
And we know there's an existing mid-block crossing there now. I think we're really, what we're proposing is with, with maybe a small median with hard skate materials, even maybe table topping or making it. Even with the top of the curb, that whole crosswalk, it would again be safer for the community to get, get across.
So just to be clear, that in this concept, in this option. When you're capping Old Twenty-Eighth and you're not allowing it to connect anymore. You're making this a really important connection to all the folks that live within this neighborhood. To sort of, you know, connect to Cascade Road and then ultimately connect over to the park here. And then certainly connect over to the, to the commercial on the other side of Cascade. So it obviously from a pedestrian and bike facility connection, super strong vehicular connection, not so much anymore. But it'll be created more walkable and the less of a sort of a cut through. And again, up at Thornapple Plaza, just maybe instead of the breaking up the parking lots. With landscape and, and, and potential um artisan or farmer's market is to really start to introduce um residential. Is there more opportunity for townhomes um, or some um medium format density? Uh, you know, living arrangements to complement Thornapple Plaza related to rooftops. And certainly to add rooftops to the whole village to sort of ignite that uh opportunity to grow. From a uh commercial retail restaurant idea. So again, quick pictures of what these places and spaces might look like. You know, again, incorporating pocket parks into the neighborhood, you know, specific to those guys. Connecting them out to Cascade through some plazas and connectivity out to Cascade. And certainly connecting them over to Tassel Park and across the street to the commercial and tying into the Thornapple uh Plaza.
And you know, the green spaces are very important, especially within like the townhome development that you see right here. And, and I think just want to reiterate to the group that, you know, the townhomes that we're proposing are very high end. So we're not maximizing, you know, we're not trying to pack a bunch of people into these areas. We're just trying to create quality environments and that's, that's important to us.
So again, these are this couple of pictures here too of like just sort of how potential connections can work. Um, that are more aesthetically pleasing and a heck of a lot safer. So again, looking at the uh, you know, how this thing potentially layout from a, from a roadway standpoint and how that would look. So this is concept three. This is the most aggressive. Alright, so this is basically saying, okay, same thing, constant park, uh, opportunity for development across the street. Um, a neighbor, new neighborhood. A little bit higher density residential. Close off Old Twenty-Eighth Street, make this connection here with the mid-block crossing. You know, I mean, it's kind of funny, like when we did these, Walgreen was alive and well. And all of a sudden we found out Walgreen might be closing a heck of a lot of stores. So this became a heck of a lot more realistic uh when we heard that than when we originally uh talked about it. But I mean, this is a dynamite piece of property. Right? And that's why Walgreen went there. Now, this would be hugely highly visible, this is, this is the corner of Main and Main, right? And so we shame on us as planners if we wouldn't identify this as an opportunity for a, a change in use and a change in intensity. Right? So we had to do it. And then we also then need to think about what this crosswalk wants to look like and how that feels safer. And then we also talked about what happens if Thornapple Plaza isn't Thornapple Plaza anymore? What if we created another neighborhood? What if we created another pocket park? What if we extended Twenty-Eighth Street? And then once it crossed over Cascade and went past these first two commercial applications. We wound it down to make the feel this wonderful pedestrian sort of boulevard environment. Right? What if we had homes on each side of the, of the street? What if we boulevarded the whole thing? And then what if we made a really strong connection uh? East west uh along this and connected us to Orange Avenue. And so all of a sudden we start to have these important connections, every really good village and every great downtown has a grid that starts to form. Where you start to have these connections of alleys and the different hierarchies of road systems. And then all as part of a network interwoven. Create that walkable, connected environment that I think we've all been sort of looking at as an opportunity for, 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 for the village.
One quick thing, uh, just going back to our goals, pedestrian safety, things like that. If you kind of look at uh where the Walgreen side is now at the corner and where the townhome side is. I think it's, it's great that we're kind of creating these pedestrian greenways. So. You know, basically you're coming from Friendship Park, you're going up, you can cut through that area. You can hit the uh pocket park and then go across the street at Cascade. In a safe, in a safe way through the mid-block crossing, so I think that was really key, that new.
Yeah, the, the Greenways concept's really important, I think it's sort of, it'll, it'll, I think become part of the thread of the plan. Is making sure that all these things are connected in this, in these wonderful aesthetically pleasing connected ways. And so again, this would be something that you guys all say, yeah, I really like the idea of making more connections and more sidewalks and more beautification. You know, and elevate the aesthetic. Then all of a sudden that gets baked into the plan, so that every time there's a decision being made, a land use change being made, a proposal being made related to. Traffic calming or functionality of the road. Somebody has to raise their hand and say, but what are we doing from an aesthetic standpoint? What are we doing from a connectivity standpoint? How are we, you know, is, where's the bike lane? Show me that, so that's sort of what we're talking about. Again, more pictures to sort of illustrate the idea and again what those, those boulevards might look like. So, Josh.
So a change in action, so this is a parcel case study that we've, we've introduced um. On the uh corner of Orange and Cascade. So international beverage, we've looked at that site closely. And, and wanted to basically kind of create a three schemes that really kind of. It's kind of tied to our concept one, two and three where it's kind of. Light a little bit more and then a little bit more, so you can kind of see that as we go through this. But really encompasses the, the ideals that we talked about at uh throughout the presentation. We get more of a presence, an expansion along Cascade Road, so you widen the building a little bit. Um, I think that you add some outdoor seating that activates Cascade as well. And then you can kind of see at the bottom of the screen there. Alright. Right there, you can see that the, this is the, the proposed median that's coming through. And then terminates on one of those kind of maybe stone low walls that are part of the streetscape improvements. This one right here. Basically says, we want to go ahead and we want to expand on that outdoor space. So we're taking out a few, few additional parking spaces. I know through this plan that there is zoning code improvements. And so we're really kind of setting the tone of maybe what that could be. Um. This one actually says, why don't we go ahead and keep the same footprint of the building and then build up? So that's where you're getting your square footage. Uh, this, this tenant actually wanted to expand their building and so giving them options on how to do that. Uh, parking count wise. Parking count wise, I apologize. Parking count wise, we're around the same, so we're losing maybe a couple spaces in this and we're apples to apples in all the others. Uh, one important thing to this, we are keeping existing curb cuts in the first and second scheme. Just a quick little study model of, of what that could be, what that would look like. And again, activating Cascade. Potentially building from that same footprint and move, going up a story, what that building could look like. And then what that outdoor space could look like, you can have tasting tastings out there. Um, you, you can program that in a variety of different ways. You can see maybe start to incorporate some sort of signage elements that are, that are standardized for this, for the village.
So it's important to note too that like, the ideas that are conveyed here from a concept standpoint. Are all uh applicable through a zoning code changes and design standard changes, right? So these are just pictures of what it could potentially look like. But then we could basically through, you know, writing and enforcing code, create these areas from a policy standpoint. Instead, all of a sudden now, if you're going to reinvest into your building or reinvest in your property. Or your tenant wants to do improvements, that those are the, the, these are the new ways of engaging those uh, those expansions.
Third concept, basically takes the same site and. Closes off uh the curb cut along Cascade, so you come directly off of Orange only. You keep the existing building the as, as is and beautify it and put a new facade on it. And then you created a Jason building next to it, and then really the people space becomes the in-between of those two buildings. So you can have fun things like string lights, you can have small fountain, you can have. Uh, you can, you can do a variety of different things in that space.
But one thing too, and important to understand too, is that, yeah, we pulled the parking way back, right? So how the heck? Well, there's zoning, current zoning code, no, you can't. But if we look at all these different alleys. And we get to a point where we can add a lot more on-street parking within the village. That offsets and allows us to have creator denser environments with more public space. Because we're not applying parking lots everywhere. You know, so we can use the street to add those parking spaces that we need and kind of have a net zero uh gain-loss uh across the district over time.
That's right. And what that building is, it could be, it could be anything, it could be an outdoor tasting room, it could be, you know, garage doors that come up. And you know, there's a variety of ways to, to maybe marriage those, those two buildings together. Maybe it's two stories.
I don't know what's next. Okay, so. Yep. So we kind of wanted to open it up, there's a couple of ways to do it, and I think Grace, this is probably your decision. Um, we can just sort of open up the questions and answers. Um, if you don't want to talk out loud, I think that you can use these um. Uh, index cards to write your dislikes, your likes, your concerns and your questions. The pink would be questions. We'll deposit the pink ones or any one of those things over into the um. Into the ballot boxes and at the end of this presentation, after the Q and A, I can go ahead and read the question and try to give a some level of response. And I'm probably not going to have all the answers because I never do. And I'm probably not going to have all the answers because I never do. So with that. Easily corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looked like a small livery kind of idea?
No, right now it's just for those individual parties that come in.
Yep, absolutely incorporatable.
So I think what our thought was is that those, the stadium step areas, that would be something that nuanced in a way that could incorporate that. So.
And Josh and I did a park um, in central Ohio that you have lockers for canoes. And then kayaks and you just pay a fee and then you can pull the kayak out and then go down and then bring it back and then get your money back. So lots of neat ideas and definitely a game changer related to how people use the river. They have access to it.
But it's a really good point.
I got a couple of comments, I guess. Oh, okay.
Uh, Kenneth Carey from twenty-nine twenty-nine Thornapple River Drive. Um, I, you know, I think this is long overdue. I think it's fantastic plans. Um, depending on where we, we decide to go with this. But I do know that a lot, and a lot of people are here um, question the speed of traffic. I'm on Thornapple River Drive and it's, it's unmanageable right now. And in order for these plans to actually work, we're going to have to control some uh. Uh, traffic elements here and we haven't been able to do it so far. I just wonder how we can accomplish that. Especially on Thornapple River Drive and the speeds going through um, Cascade Road and Thornapple River Drive are. It's, it's a potential disaster in in waiting right now. So.
No, I think.
I, I think the leadership agrees with you. I know the stakeholders, previous meeting agree with you. So, you know, I think through the plan, we need to really identify what these traffic calming options are. And then what, what the pride, the road priorities? So that, you know, we can start making, you know, really focused decisions on, is it Thornapple River Drive? Is it Cascade? Is it Old Twenty-Eighth? Where are we focusing those energies? And then get in line for the funding sources that are available uh, through the state and certainly through the feds right now. And we're, we're doing all kinds of stuff all over the Midwest related to traffic calming measures. Using lots of different types of grants that are available to you guys here in Michigan as well, so.
Yeah, and that, you know, speaking specifically to design, I think, you know, um, it's, it's focus on different material types. It's focus on uh, introducing medians where we're able to introduce medians. It's um.
It's also cutting down the runway and pinching the lanes and pinching the road.
Yeah.
You know, and creating an environment that you don't feel like you can, can go fast because you'll feel out of control. But there's so many different ways, tools and things that we do. And I told you before, like, that's like the, the mainstay of, of our organization is this. Is traffic and connectivity and stuff, so it'll be in the plan and I.
Well, if you notice that, you know, some of the, the ideas they use for are basically noise reading. And, you know, you get electric cars coming through our uh, intersection now that make as much noise as a regular gas vehicle. So if you're talking about brick crossways or something like that. Take a moment and listen to all the traffic that goes through. I, I think those traffic calming measures uh, sometimes create another problem also. So uh.
Got it.
And one of the things we did related to this, but the, the bridge over the river on Cascade Road. The sign part of it was that kind of, wanted to save the bikers and walkers. And then it includes a path underneath the bridge, so it's, different people can cross without having to cross above, which is part of it. Um, but those lanes were wider than they needed to be. The road commission was okay with it, but part of it visually is, you know, the path it goes in enough for a bike walker. But it also visually narrows a little bit. So as you come in the village down the, you know, down that, it doesn't really, you know, along the same street.
Right.
Little problem is that, we talked at road mission about Thornapple River Drive. Um, the residential part going from the fire station, fire station one, and that's really, really important. Also, um. A lot of topics, but in the road mission ultimately had to decision, but there's something we tend to have absolutely look at it.
Scott Rissy seventy-two thirty-eight Cascade Road. To build on what you guys were just talking about with traffic on Thornapple River Drive, I think that. And maybe this is a little bold of a vision, but uh, I think the best way to make the downtown area walkable. And to eliminate the traffic bottlenecks there. In, in the speed would be to route Thornapple River Drive coming from Ada. Instead of having it to come all the way to Cascade Road, having it maybe uh, meander up Peace Street. And through the plaza behind the gas station and connect directly to the end of twenty-eighth street. Because then you wouldn't have everybody coming down twenty-eighth street making that zigzag. And you'd eliminate a lot of the traffic past Tassel Park going across the intersection. Because that traffic would just flow down twenty-eighth street and then naturally go down Thornapple River Drive out to Ada.
Uh, just a quick comment while we're talking about traffic. We have engaged conversations with both MDOT in regards to Cascade Road. But also with Kent County Road Commission in regards to uh, Thornapple River Drive and Old Twenty-Eighth. So they both know that we're going through this process and are willing to sit at the table and look at all of these options. That's a new one I haven't heard yet, Scott.
I think most of you know who I am. My name is Mark Rhodey, three zero eight seven Thornapple River Drive. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-seven, so I've got a pretty good history of what's been going on, good and bad. More importantly, I've got a background in, earned a graduate degree in architecture, professional engineer's license. Fifty-one years building multifamily housing. My company, which is in its thirty-third year, is the largest builder of multifamily housing in the west side of the state. And we are, I believe, one of the size largest contractors, general contractors in Kent County. We understand and work with architects on these for many, many years. I've seen concepts that have brought that have been silly and unrealistic in past years. This is the first concept that has made sense with a proper thought pattern. And how all proceed is a very, very professional effort. I do agree with it. Uh, several people have already talked about traffic on Thornapple River Drive. We are about a half a mile from uh, Tassel Park, so we could testify on that. Uh, a year ago, a year and a half ago, uh, one of the trustees here, Tim Nordhoke, and I walked. Thornapple River Drive to see if there's any way to have a walkway or a bicycle path along there with two lane traffic. It's not, it is impossible. The concept for Tassel Park, which is probably the first thing that would go forward. Because first of all, Cascade Township controls virtually everything there, so it can go forward. The critical thing is this traffic problem, which we've all seen. It is a racetrack. It's interesting to see double bottomed semis go past my house at forty-five to fifty miles an hour. It's exhilarating. Uh. Not that I want to have it happen, but also I, I like motorcycles. I, Tuesday nights are speeding motorcycles going through there at sixty miles an hour. For this concept to be working, I believe that what would have to happen is Thornapple River Drive. Would have to be turned into a one-way between where it ends at Thorn Hills and Cascade Road. It would have to be a single lane with, could be have a bicycle path, which would be allow people to get back and forth to Tassel Park. And probably makes most sense to have it go from east to west. So somebody coming from Ada or coming down Cascade Road could drive into Tassel Park and there's no huge traffic flow going there. Are you relevant? The traffic that was going up and down there is an open question because there's different ways of handling it. Mainly, it looks like you would have to go on twenty-eighth street, somehow route down Cascade Road or in another manner. To keep it away from the bridge and Tassel Park. But the, I like the idea of the, the interlocking things that, that could be done. Tassel Park is, is not as successful as, as it should be. Too many high trees, too many shadows. No feeling of safety at night and you can't see certain parts of the park there. Phenomenal location. But it was not well executed when it was built. This is open, has trees and, and point, and sightlines, which are comforting. Will be good for people who are there and, and attractive. And obviously because of the major intersection between Cascade and uh, Thornapple River Drive will be seen by anybody going across the bridge. I think it's, it's a great concept and it's one that should be developed.
Thornapple River Drive, what direction is that from the Tuffy down to Fire Station One? It's west. What direction? Headed east to west? Okay. So two, two years or so ago, that, that strip between Tuffy and Fire Station One, terrible, right? And it's everybody's shortcut to get out to Thirty-Sixth Street. No shoulder. Used to be a beautiful scenic, you know, quiet little road. Thirty-sixth Street exit goes in and now it's everybody's shortcut. Although if you time it, I seriously question if it's much shorter than just going twenty-eighth street by Sugar Mama's and then Thorn Hills. Which is made, you know, made, doesn't have the curves and made to handle more traffic. Right now it's underutilized. So we've had multiple meetings with the road commission on what can be done. So that people that live in that area and also the huge neighborhood back there, Berger, the, all those homes. So that they're not landlocked and that the huge neighborhood has the opportunity, because geographically it's not that far, to get down to what would be a village area. To, to Tassel Park. The road commission will not allow, um, what do you call pedestrian medians that aren't real actual crosswalks? What, they're not going to put a crosswalk in that gives somebody the false sense of security that they can cross the road when the traffic has the right of way. So that median that was, I don't know how that they allowed that to go in, but that's right now by Reese's and the um, the barber shop. It's actually dangerous because it creates pedestrian, it gives us false sense of security to pedestrians. That they actually have a right of way to cross out. That's why we get a couple accidents. It's, it's a median in theory, sounds great. But if you do it the wrong way, like that one, it's, it's creates more of a hindrance. That's why it gets hit all the time. It's like a halfway doing something that ends up creating more problem than it is. So go back to this stretch where you guys are, the, the, this ongoing concern. There's no shoulder and the houses are such with the hill, you cannot get a pathway in there. The, and the road commission gave us no guarantees, but the one thing that they've looked at doing was making that when you. Uh, this is, but this is controversial and people are already scared, changes scary, right? So people see this, like, we're already dealing with some big changes here. If we unroll this thing, everybody's going to be scared. If you end at Tuffy and you head towards Fire Station One, the road commission is willing to take to their board. The, the possibility of making that one way, which then gives plenty of room for pedestrians and bikers. It would end at Berger so that people could come in off Thorn Hills, Thornapple River Drive and get to that big neighborhood. That would give the connectivity that we need, or sorry, that it allows you to safely walk and bike and, you know, the neighborhood also. That was mentioned to a few people who don't live in this area and the response was, that's my shortcut, that's my shortcut. The question is, was that really created to be a shortcut? You know, that meandering narrow road? So it's not the smartest thing for this board of trustees, the, in election year, to bring this hot topic up and cascade with resonance. But it's been on our, it's on our brain. That is the only option that the road commission will consider. Personally, I fully support it and I think a majority of the board of trustees supports it too. But it's a poor timing to bring it up when it's November, you know, we're what, a month out from November fifth? That's the option. We're more than happy to pursue it. Frankly, the one thing, the board commission, or sorry, the, the road commission shot it down. But for the fact, we incorporated it into a larger redesign concept, hence this. So. Just so we're totally open and transparent, I support it, but it takes four votes. And it's on the table, but that is the only thing you're going to get because it's ultimately up to the road commission.
It would be one way up to Berger?
Oh, and we had it on this concept, but then we took it off knowing how polarizing it could be.
Can you go back, Tony, to the, the slide?
After the turnaround by where the dam is, right now you have got that second parking lot.
Yeah.
That becomes a turnaround, so you can, oh, and the reason it has to go that direction is because that Tuffy intersection is so congested and dangerous. Just in general, to, to take some of that pressure off, to make it a little more walkable, a little more bikeable. Then you, you've got, traffic only goes one way, so you eliminate traffic going, you know, that's a little less pressure on that intersection. And that also makes the parallel parking a little more doable. Wait, still? Oh, is it, are you talking the PFAS water mediation? Yeah. Yeah, phase two.
But it's something that's going to happen. There might be some, I think they're going to have to tear up the road again. Because the water lines crossing from one side of Thornapple River Drive to the other, and I don't think they can bore it off. So there might be some traffic shut down this next spring. All this is due, I'm also came in with pictures last week and I looked where the X's are.
And residents aren't paying for any of that. Everything that has to do with that project is going to be paid for with grants and if there's extra cost, the airport's paying for that.
Yeah, and we're working closely with the city of Grand Rapids in regards to that project because it is all part of the PFAS remediation. So I know Molly has comments.
Hi, um, I'm Molly. I live, or Molly Webb, I live on Burton Street by Janine. Um, I think this is awesome. I'm really excited about it. Um, off the top of my head, I'd like to see Cascade continue with it more of a rural vibe. In comparison to Ada, I'd like it to be very aesthetically pleasing, but also a little country-ish. Um, we moved here from Los Angeles. We love it here. Um, I would compare it to Beverly Hills is Ada and Brentwood is Cascade. Brentwood has a country market. It's like a more of a relaxed vibe. I'd like to see that continue, maybe not so modern. A lot of those pictures to me seemed like modern. I like the brick, but I also like Frosty Boy and. All of that, maybe just clean it up and use like nicer materials and things like that. But I think uh, it's beautiful as it is, it just needs a little revamp. So I'm excited about that. Um, one thing that I'm concerned about is parking. You mentioned perhaps a place for weddings. To me, this looks like the perfect spot for our. Uh, FHC kids, Eastern kids or all the high schoolers to come and take photos. Um, we always have a problem, where do we go? We've been going to Ada Hotel, we're going to Asia Valley, we're going to, this is perfect, but where are we going to park?
Yep.
So that's something I think about, um, when like, when I'm looking at this. Um, and then also maintenance. I feel like our current administration is playing catch-up with. Years of just not maintaining Cascade the way it should be. And they're already spread thin, so this is beautiful, but it's going to have to be maintained. So I'd love to hear what that plan is for that as well.
Yeah, so a couple, yeah, two things I don't want to address. One's parking, we agree. Um, I think that this entire. Um, thought related to the village, I think there's an on-street parking answer embedded into all these new connections that we're making. To offset some concerns that you have. I think you're right. I mean. Is it a small intimate wedding? Sure, we can probably accommodate it. Remember when I said that the, all the on-street here are par, is parallel now, but if you did head in at an angle, you'd double the amount of spaces. Right? So there's a couple of things that we can do to kind of get you closer to where you're trying to go. Maintenance is a hundred percent right, like question to ask, like who's going to maintain all this, right? That's a question we get all the time. We'll get there through cut, the conversations. We just have to know, yeah, this is a priority. Then all of a sudden, we have to say, how are we going to pay for it? And how are we going to maintain it? And what are the budgets? And so that's what we're really good at. Is understanding what things are going to cost and then ultimately how much does it cost to maintain and what does that cost? And then projected out twenty years, you know, with inflation, with, you know, costs of all the different things sort of embedded. So that everybody here that's a decision maker has a clear picture of what, what they're, what they're going with.
Part of the part, uh, part of the part. And I love the, the way it looks, for twice a different speed. It is all, the, the, the writing, it would be great to have that kind of uniform across Cascade.
I agree.
Motley, this doesn't completely solve it, but um, once we have that, those pedestrian enhancements over the bridge, over the river. Then remember the um, the fieldstone steps right up to the church, the township bought um, White Cliff. Part of that purchase included uh, the, the shared use of that parking lot. So um, I mean, you don't, the reason you don't have weddings and stuff with massive parking lots is because places with massive parking lots aren't that attractive, right? Massive parking lots is because places with massive parking lots aren't that attractive, right? But, so we're not going to have, it's not going to look like Walmart parking, but you cross the river and especially you have that option to go underneath the, the road. There is that option for a lot of additional parking that's really not that far of a walk.
Actually, you could play it up so it is an amenity. You almost want to walk that route, right, to come into the park, so.
And we want that church to do really well, but we do have the first right of refusal if things were to change on that.
One of the things that we kept talking about in our design studio is how important. That jewel box is going to be coming over that bridge and that kind of iconic uplit at nighttime. You know, it's that celebration of the park right on the corner, that invitation to the park. And that is going to be like in my mind with the right architecture, and it ain't that right now. That's going to be the postcard that you send, hey, come visit us in Cascade, boom. I mean, I just gave me the chills, but like it's a, it's, that's going to be a dynamite facility that's going to be very iconic to you guys if it moves forward.
You know, and to speak on the maintenance, I think Tony was right on, it's kind of like. It all kind of falls into place a lot of times, so we've had kind of. Kind of impactful projects that are similar to this, that, that we've had a project where there was eighty pots and the. It was like, well, how do we maintain those, you know, now that we have them? But, but it just happens, it works out and you have to kind of prioritize what you want, but. But I think if you do something like this, that we'll figure out a way to maintain it.
Sorry, I keep talking, but the board has put a lot of time into this. Janine Hyble in the last year was hired as our volunteer coordinator for. She's the weed, we, we found her because she used to weed, pull all the, what do you call it? Garlic mustard invasive. At Burton Park, but that, then that became expanded and some of the other volunteers are here, so. We've opened up that program and that's made a big difference. We have a new parks director, a couple of new people. And then the other thing was Friendship Park had, we had the exact same concerns because there's so much more going on there and I didn't realize this. But they chose native species on purpose because. Even though it looks really nice, there's so much less maintenance as they fill in and they naturally do really well. So if you choose the right plants. Which probably should do that in my own yard, but if you choose the right plants, they thrive and they are a much lower maintenance to begin with, so you. That would be one of, two of the things. We also are having a program, Janine is, is helping with this. But where businesses can sponsor different parts, you sponsor maintenance of those different parts. We haven't done that in the past, so those are just low, what is it? High line, low line fruit? That we're doing right now that would help with maintenance.
That's great.
Yeah, just an example, just when we're driving it, right? So I've been here four times. This is the first time we've been here since the completion of the Friendship Park.
That's right.
I'm driving and I literally say to these guys, I'm like, whoa, look at how giant those bedding plant areas are. Right? They're massive. I mean, there's a huge undertaking to plan all that out. It's something that, you know, that was prioritized and is important and that's what we want to do and that's what it's going to look like, right? But you don't have to do that. So the same lens, when we're thinking about future stuff is like, is that the important thing? Or do we shift our focus to other places? And so that's part of that, you know, what Josh was saying, things fall into place, sometimes it's like, let's, we're prioritizing this. Is the crown jewel and now we take this, this, this off the table. And so again, if I'm the guy planting all those bedding plants out there, that's, 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 that's a tall order and then maintaining them.
And just to comment on that from my perspective and the administration's perspective is. This is something that we're constantly proactively thinking about moving forward with every project we take on. That if it's not doable and maintainable or sustainable in the future, we're not going to do it, we're going to step it back. So, and we also have to be. Strong enough to know where our weaknesses are and if we don't have the internal capacity to look for external capacity and assistance. And that's what we're doing in Friendship Park in, in any project moving forward. And both the board and the DDA see this vision and understand that there's a. You know, we can keep Cascade Cascade, but we can make Cascade better too. So there's, we're looking at all of those options. And for anyone that's interested, our new facilities and Parks Director is here today, his name's Dan. And our program coordinator Cindy is here as well. So we've got new faces, new blood and we're looking forward to tackling some of these, these. Projects. Any other questions, comments?
What we got?
Barbara Skinner, thirty twenty-fourth Thorn Apple River Drive. I reiterate what Mr. Rhodey said, what Ken said about the traffic on our, our road. I was on the road the other day when a fire truck was going by. I'm like, where do you pull over? You, you can't. So it's really. Really dangerous road, but my biggest concern. Three years ago was the corner of Cascade Road and Thorn Apple. I mean, right now there's visibility issues. There's only one left turn light. So that's, that's my biggest concern. You talk about, you know, doing the walls, which I think would look great. But when you're at the corner and you need to turn, is it going to create a visibility issue even more than we have today?
No, thank you.
That's a great point, I think.
We'd overlay the view triangles and we'll investigate that, kind of see what, there's a better answer. You know, a lot of times, you know, sometimes you can shift right away, sometimes you can shift the intersection. You know, when we look at Thorn Apple River Drive related to a potential one-way conversion with on-street. There can be things that can be configured to address types, those types of things, but noted.
And in the height too, I think, you know, that's going to be important, just keeping it low.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it for sure. Thank you.
A nice brick pavilion on that corner. But my main concern is Old Twenty-Eighth Street. Have you, does, do people want JT's first walk? O'Neill's Transmission and Cascade Automotive to go away? I'm very opposed to. Rental units for residents on that street. I just like, I think it's fine the way it is. I mean, you can straighten it up, do streetscapes or greenscape, green spaces, whatever, but I don't like the idea of. I don't like the idea of closing it off, making a cul-de-sac and you can't get to Cascade Road. Smart people have already learned that going to the light is faster. But I say leave Old Twenty-Eighth Street alone.
Avenue, I like the park, I like what you guys are planning there, it looks good. Even if it is a see-through building, I think that'd be good to go through. Obviously you'll have it back away from the corners much. I kind of tend to agree with Sue in regards to the old Twenty-Eighth. Right now, there's already a lot of traffic on, that goes to the light and a lot of people also veer down Old Twenty-Eighth to avoid the light. And also regarding mid-block crossings, there's times when people turning left from Cascade Road on to. Westbound Twenty-Eighth Street, it'll back up almost to that mid-block crossing that's already there now. And that's a good. Maybe two hundred yards or more, so that's, you know, adding more of them. And my other thing is just in regards to a lot of that property on Old Twenty-Eighth and even the Thorn Apple Center, I mean, those are. You know, privately owned property. I don't know if we just take it via eminent domain or we buy it out. I mean, that's a lot of money. To, that, that we have to just buy it out, so. I mean, those, those are my, those are just some of my concerns, but the park layout and plan, the other, my only other question is also. We have a lot of structures there that are there now. Would any of them be reused? Or repurposed at all? I don't know about the bathrooms or whatever.
The answer is yeah. Well, we're going to, yeah, we have to do, you know, a inventory of what we have. We, there's probably some sacred cows in there. We'll learn all that and, you know, if we're lucky enough to move this thing forward and they continue to use us. That would be something that we would investigate and get everybody on board with what we're going to do with the sacred cows as well as changing of the program. You know, we probably don't need another amphitheater, but maybe we do, right? So we'll figure it out then.
These property, this is, this is marrying public and private, right? So the township can do things within public spaces and then kind of maybe. Influence maybe what happens at private property. We're not touching anybody's property. And, and anything that is done on private property is totally voluntary, so.
Just add to that, when I first started, the owners of the plaza have already been at the table looking at how to. Work with the township and create some public-private partnerships. They're obviously overparked, so we can look at some, some things there. And then just for full disclosure, he's not here, but Rishi knows that his building was being used today as kind of a test. He's anxious, he could voluntarily, he couldn't, he actually can't wait to see them, he couldn't make it today. But he is looking to do improvements and was waiting for this kind of conversation to see. Where do we want to go? He loves his location, loves the community, but he wants to also be a part of this process, so. They, all the private property owners are, are, if they're not aware, it's not like we're taking their property. This is an evolution, I think, Tony, you said, twenty, thirty years. May never happen on the private property, but the Walgreens incident or issue, I mean, that's pretty timely that they announced that this week. And we already had this scheduled, so it's not like we were in cahoots with Walgreens.
Oh, and we also, the whole rentals type of thing, that is.
Yeah, no one used, yeah, no one used the word rental. It's, it's whatever residential use. That we determine and the market determines makes sense.
And ideally, the government, when you think of really good communities, you don't necessarily even know where their government offices are. The government's job is to silently help with the community, you know, better the community, help them be more what residents want them to be. You don't need to see a government building, you know, we should be a silent partner that helps the community, not, you know. The center of the community is the, the local office is, so. Which I don't agree with, so background helper, which is why the DDA then is the funding mechanism. Because the DDA is, you know, tax increment, they collect a little bit from just the, the set downtown district. So again, this funding would come from downtown development authority funds, not residential tax base or anything like that. Yes, and partnerships. So for example, facades, the DDA just passed, and this was a long time in the making. A facade improvement program, so it's optional, but certain businesses and priority is given to businesses that are near this area. Can, can apply for matching grants for certain facade improvements. So if your roof is old, you need a new roof, you're, you're not going to get it, but if it's a, you know, something on frontage that enhances. The aesthetics and it's consistent with this, then, then the DDA has the option of, of giving some money for a match.
Sorry, I'm going to step in one more time, I forgot. I'm sure you've already done this, but when I work in Ada part-time and it's a logistical nightmare. So hopefully you've looked at best practices that, that Ada's found has worked and lessons learned. As far as parking and traffic flow and everything else, because that's a great example of. It's, it's beautiful, but it's also a nightmare at the same time.
Don't, I mean, for transparency sake, that's the first place they took us. This is what we don't want, right?
I just want to say, I'm Tom McDonald, I'm on the board and I think all your concepts are excellent. I think it's great. That you've thought outside the box and kind of challenged us, then you have this dialogue. Because it's really valuable to get new ideas and I, I support a lot of these things. I think they're great ideas. Like Mr. Rhodey, nineteen eighty-five, I lived on Thorn Apple River Drive, just down this road from where Mr. Rhodey eventually built. And he's right that, that, from nineteen eighty-five to now, it's that night and day difference. It's like a racetrack there. It's really bad. And incorporating Thorn Apple River Drive in a bigger picture as you've done, not just isolating it to Tassel Park. Was a great idea and really important. So thanks for that vision and helping us, but two other quick points. I didn't know we could even, that the road commission would even consider a one-way on Thorn Apple River Drive, and that sounds like a potentially great solution. For the whole area, so I hope that can pan out. I also wondered if you thought about roundabouts or traffic circles. About ten years ago, because of the traffic problems at Cascade Road and Twenty-Eighth Street. And the potential for accidents because people are going fifty miles through there, the road commission proposed to slow down traffic and to lessen accidents. A roundabout and, you know, a lot of people were opposed to it, the road commission let it go, but they said from a long-term growth perspective. That would facilitate more traffic in a safer manner, so it's, again, thinking outside the box, people aren't comfortable with, with that. But that was one of the solutions they came up with for Twenty-Eighth Street and Cascade Road.
We didn't get, so I want to, I want to address that because it's super important. It's not that that can't happen. It's, we're not there yet, meaning like we don't have the traffic studies, we don't have the movements down, we don't have the crashes investigated. We don't have all the data that we would need, because that's just a tool. Sometimes a traditional intersection functions better than a roundabout. And sometimes it does not, and so we don't have those numbers yet. That wasn't our task. Our task is to stay way up here. And then if someone's like, there's a million things that happened right here, this is terrible, like Thorn Apple River Drive related to speeds. Then we go in and say, how do we address that? So is roundabout an answer? It is. It's, it's, it's a tool in our toolbox, like wrenches and screwdrivers. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we just, we just skimmed the surface.
Anybody else want to share anything? Positive, negative? This is just the beginning, so initial, you know, concept, not the beginning, this has been going on a long time, but as far as. Actual concepts. Kristen?
I'm still thinking about that idea you, somebody back here had about expanding Twenty-Eighth Street and going kind of back around and. Kind of ignoring the whole Thorn Apple River Drive to Cascade Road to Twenty-Eighth Street and that is actually a good idea. You know those apartments that were built back there? It's frustrating because that would have been a great opportunity. And instead, you know, those apartments were allowed with the street that goes right through that isn't even up to county standards that. Lots of possibilities.
Yeah, I heard it when he said it, I was like, that's good.
Do we have anybody virtually, Jessica? Nobody? Okay. Okay, so with that, thank you so much for coming out.
Actually, can I make a comment?
Oh, yes.
I think you could all help us. I mean, I wasn't sure what kind of public participation we were going to get today, but I think this is actually great. We had good comments, criticisms, so as you're out talking with your neighbors, as we know what you're all going to do and you're going to, you know, see things that are going to come out in the newsletter. Starting next week and then on our website, as you hear feedback, please have them approach the township. This is not, as Grace said, this is just the beginning. This is the fun stuff where we get to kind of, you know, draw and come up with these crazy concepts. But it's not until they get friction and get public buy-in that can we move forward with them. So as you guys are getting feedback or hearing comments, let them, let them know to let us know what they're thinking. And I just want to say thanks to H M for coming out today. This was, this was fantastic.
Yeah, thank you. Jade, do we have any updates on Tuffy teardown?
Yeah, if anybody's got any connections at Consumers or DTE, I need you to, to hound them because I need the power and the electricity. I need everything cut out, the gas and the electricity cut off. We're going through our government liaisons and that's even been a struggle, so. I was supposed to hear something by noon today from Consumers, noon came and went, so. Other, as soon as we get that power cut, that building's coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of what happens with this moving forward, but that building will be down.
Thank you. Is there a motion by the board?